If in the past, if in the past, the school committee has decided to no longer subcontract out and hire directly, and I imagine they can do, if the school committee in Bedford wanted to go back to hiring earmarks, like they had to make that, they had to have made that decision somewhere down the line. I'm unclear as to why this legislation is needed if in the past, school departments have made those decisions on their own.
I can't speak to what Bedford would do or what they would be obligated to do, but we were obligated to basically bargaining good faith through this entire process, which is exactly what we did. I was also superintendent in Falmouth, Maine, where we did have some contracted services, and it has been that way for, since I was there and for many years later.
Representative Stuckes, and then Representative Baines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, sir, for being here. I was wondering, as far as the process, when you were looking at contractors and that sort of thing, I'm assuming that, you know, you were looking, looking at quality levels, at, you know, liability insurances, the ability for them to do the service that you were looking for, and then, of course, cost. Can you kind of give me an idea of what that process was like?
Yeah, it was a very, it was a very involved and complicated process in terms of ensuring that we had specified exactly what the expectations would be of a contracted service, the standards of quality that would be expected. The, I mean, it cut down to very specific square footage, what needed to be done on what sort of rotating basis. My facilities director is a bit obsessive about details. It was probably the most detailed request work proposal that I've seen. So it was, it was very well articulated what the responsibilities would be and what the standards of quality would be expected.
Follow up.
So all that and save money at the same time?
Yes.
Sounds like a win-win.
It was a win-win.
Thank you.
Representative Bedford? Thank you, Senator. And thank you again. I know that the hard work that you do right now and the pressures you're under given budgetary constraints, so thanks for taking the time to be here. I guess I'm just, because you're the person to ask, I'm wondering, I need a little more information here regarding replacing the custodial services and the bus drivers and how this is going to produce a $250,000 savings, but deliver the same quality or better services. So you're explaining, how does that happen exactly?
Well, I think that, again, I'm an educational expert and an organizational expert. I know how to run schools and orchestrate the work of teams towards the end of improving outcomes for students. I'm not a, I'm not a person who really fully understands the custodial piece. We were basically, the savings come basically from sort of setting aside the employment responsibility and having someone else take on the responsibility of doing all of that part of our business that, again, is not necessarily central to the mission. Clean schools and safe schools are critically important, of course, but it was, it's really, it's really taking a piece of a business where someone else has greater expertise, has probably better margins in terms of buying all of the needed chemicals and supplies, has a better way of training and basically overseeing that process than we do.
Sure. I think my concern, I'm wondering if, maybe you wonder this as well, is I'm wondering if you're taking full-time employee, full-time custodial employee, bus drivers now, you'll be transitioned, perhaps, in this transition to save $250,000, you'll be moving people to part-time work, people will be losing, losing their jobs, I guess, because they'll be replaced with new workers?
I think that, first off, we're not doing it because...
Oh, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand why you...
What would have, what would have happened would have been that the existing employees would have been given first opportunity to interview for the, for that, those crews, and basically, my expectation would have been that those who opted to do that would have joined and worked for a new employer.
And just one more. Would you have been worried, though, if they're transitioning to this new employer that they might be getting paid less, they might not get benefits anymore, they...
I think that, I think that my, my goal, yes, of course, I did worry about that. And I, I don't think that that was our goal.
I know that.
Okay. The goal, basically, was to use the very scarce dollars that I have toward the objective and what I'm responsible and obligated to do, which is to provide the highest level of education within the classrooms. My focus really is within the classrooms, not in the halls and bathrooms.
Representative Mastrocchio, and then Representative Baines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just because you brought that up as your example, was the custodial thing, because in my experience, and I think I remember reading about this, these kinds of decisions, when you're taking something and you prioritize it, basically, and you take it out, I mean, these are custodial services, they are custodians that are in schools, working with kids, because, and having close contact with kids, and I know that it's part of a larger community discussion about whether, that that is a good way to provide those services, and that's all part and parcel of that. And sometimes, the concerns are really not, I mean, your concern, they say you're really concerned about money and that that doesn't have anything to do with the classroom, but in reality, it kind of does. So, I mean, were those part of the whole community discussion that happened, and it's probably still happening?
I think that there is absolutely a sensitivity on my part and sensitivity on the board's part of the important, of the importance of any adult who is working within our schools, and that it is important that there be good role models and reliable and responsible people. I think that we presumed that, and I hope I'm answering your question, we presumed that through a contracted service, that we would have those adults, in fact, we presumed that many of them would be some of the employees that we have. In my experience in Falmouth, we had, we noticed no difference in terms of the relationship with students or the environment of the school or the standards of cleanliness between those areas of our schools that were under contract versus being done by our employees.
Just one more. So those people in Falmouth, that they provided the service that the school district had been paying, and they did it for less, you must have known how much were they, were then the employees were at the end of the job, so they were making less money? I mean, how is the private company going to make money unless they're actually, I'm just curious?
Yeah.
And they provide the same service for less money?
Yeah, I think that, right, I, I think that the key is they're taking an area of responsibility that I save money on in terms of not having to oversee necessarily or oversee in a much more general and broad way. And they are, they are experts who really have a, have a specialty area that we don't specialize in necessarily. So I think that, and in terms of impact on wages or, or benefits, I suspect that there was also more of an alignment to be happening by that contracted service with whatever the market price would be in, in terms of those jobs.
Representative Bates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, and also, I realized that Senator Cushing had asked me to answer a couple of questions to you this morning, and I was able to listen to your testimony when I wasn't here, so I appreciate Representative Ford addressing some of those in my absence, but I wanted to ask you a couple of questions as a self-described education expert. In this bill, it, again, it does not specify that it would be non-teaching positions, but I guess my first question would be, how would you define a non-teaching position?
I would say anything that is, is really more a support rather than a direct service to students.
Yeah, follow up. Forgive me if that seems a bit general, but, I mean, there, what about support staff? Your, for instance, your ed techs, things like those who have direct student contact or even indirect student contact, that would be affecting...
That would, that would be part of our instructional staff, so I would say that we're really talking about non-teaching or non-instruction staff.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I guess, in order for me to understand if the non-education people you're looking at saving the money on, you were able to save, you could have saved $250,000, so I don't know if your budget for, for your custodians' bus drivers was $2 million, and you're now giving this contract to someone else for 1.75 million, from my math, that guy's still going to have to make money because the school wasn't making any money on this deal, they were just paying all the benefits and wages of these people. So a $250,000 cut out of a $1 or $2 million budget, someone, someone is going to have to make a reasonable profit on that, someone's going to take one heck of a cut in wages and benefits. Is that, is that basically correct?
I don't know what one heck of a cut is. I do believe that the way that the contracted services would run would be consistent with whatever the market would pay for the skills required to do the job. Not that I'm excited about that, I think I indicated that in one of the earlier responses. What I need to be focused on, however, is to look at every opportunity to take money that could be used in the classroom and put it in the classroom. Because without doing that, as we've continued to receive less and less state subsidy and the taxpayers have been less and less excited about paying for the schools in Scarborough, I ended up teeter tottering on cutting back on our teaching staff. So it's a, it's a difficult, it's a difficult balance, I think, to strike, but I didn't really care what the profitability was of the contracted service. I needed to know, could they do what I needed them to do? Could they do it at a reasonable price that would save us money? And, and would my employees be treated fairly? And the answer to all of those was yes.
Just a follow-up. And the Maine School Superintendent Association would want to do this even if you got fully funded?
Yes.
Dr. Emerson, I know you've worked in a number of other school districts, so of the other school districts that you have worked in, how many of those had some form of subcontracted service?
I've only worked in two others, now Scarborough, and both of them had some level of services that were contracted out.
And when you worked in Massachusetts, was it common, I mean, obviously, you talked to other superintendents, so was it, was it common in Massachusetts for districts to subcontract?
Yes. It was more common than here.
And how many teaching positions approximately can you trade for $250,000 custodial work?
Four or five teachers.
And that equates to impacting how many students potentially?
Well, four or five times. I mean, if you're a high school teacher, you're teaching as many as 120 students. If you have one class, you've got a class of 20 to, generally 20 to 30 kids, I would say.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you for spending your better part of your day with us.
Thanks.
Okay. The next person that we're going to call up is our last proponent before we go to the designated opponent, and is Mr. Mixx.
Thank you, Senator, Representative, and the committee for allowing us to have this excellent debate on the issue of right to work. There has been a lot said, and the testimony has been fantastic. What I'm going to try to do is I'm going to try to give an exact description of what right to work does, answer a couple of questions that have come from representatives and senators here about the legality of exclusive representation and monopoly representation, and then, of course, obviously, stand for any question you would ask of me. The right to work issue is very, very simple. In the 25 states that have the laws on the books, either statutorily or through constitutional amendment, you will find in no instance that any of those statutes or constitutional amendments stop anyone from joining a labor union. They don't stop anyone from asking a union official to represent them and bargain for them collectively. They don't stop anyone from paying dues to a union if they choose to do so. They do not stop anyone from being involved in a union political effort if they choose to do so. What the laws on the books in 25 states do is they protect a right of a worker to join a union, to participate in a union, to do whatever they'd like with the union, but it also protects an individual worker's right to choose not to. And obviously, one of the seminal questions here is whether or not you can be compelled to join a union. You'll hear some of that later this afternoon, you've heard of some of it today. It is true, under the law, you cannot be forced to join a labor union. In fact, because of Supreme Court cases that our organization, the National Right to Work Legal Defense Foundation, and by the way, I'm Mark Mixx from Springfield, Virginia, I apologize for not introducing myself properly.
I should have mentioned that.
I apologize. Because of Supreme Court cases that we've won and cases that we've actually brought to the U.S. Supreme Court on behalf of the case here in Maine, the debate over union membership and forced political conformity that is bonds is something that is very familiar with people in this room. We have gone to the United States Supreme Court 17 times on behalf of working men and women. We don't represent businesses, we sue businesses, in fact, when they violate workers' rights as it relates to compulsory union. And I will start out by saying first, there has been, there is, and there will always be a place in the American marketplace for labor unions. There is no place, however, for compulsion in the labor union movement. We go back to this grand experiment back in 1935, some 80 years ago, where Franklin Roosevelt decided that he was going to federalize labor policy in America. Up to that point, labor management relations were set at the state level, they were dealt with, and the way we have interference and other issues with people, they dealt with them that way. Franklin Roosevelt decided that during the Great Depression and during this opportunity, he would never let a good crisis go to waste. And so what he did is he federalized national labor policy. In fact, it was interesting, because the Supreme Court, in an attempt to do this previously to the National Industrial Recovery Act, it overruled this kind of national industrial law as unconstitutional. And Franklin Roosevelt came back to the court after the Wagner Act, which is the fundamental labor policy of America passed in 1935, litigated and upheld in 1937. He went to the U.S. Supreme Court Chief Justice Hughes and said, "We sure would like to see this ruled constitutional." And in fact, history says, I wasn't there, so I can't state to the facts, but history will, will reflect that it was Chief Justice Hughes who was confronted with Roosevelt's claim that, for all those justices over 70 years old, they should get an associate judge and the Supreme Court should go to 15 members. Well, as the story goes, the switch in time saved nine, and the Wagner Act was ruled constitutional, and since that point, we have federalized labor union policy as it relates to private sector workers in America. From 1935 to 1947, clearly understood, the union movement grew dramatically during that period, because they did establish the compulsory, compulsory monopoly privilege that is in the law today. And it is that law, that private sector law, coming out of that decision, out of that legislation in 1935, that governs private sector labor relations in Maine today. There is no law on the books, there is no statute in Maine that forces a worker to pay dues or fees as a condition of employment in the private sector. There are union security agreements and union contracts that say you can be fired for failure to pay dues or fees to a union, but there's nothing in Montana statute, or, excuse me, Maine statutes that indicate this compulsion, this comes from your laws. In 1947, after this dramatic growth in the union movement, Congress considered the TAC-Hartley Act in 1947, which amended the Wagner Act, now comes together as the National Labor Relations Act. In one of those sections in the TAC-Hartley Act, Section 14B, they said that if a state could affirmatively outlaw the union security agreement, they would let a state do that, a state or territory specifically, in the TAC-Hartley Act. Since that time, even though states have passed right to work laws starting in 1944, in 1947, they passed TAC-Hartley, the legal cases flow, and right to work laws are upheld. And they are upheld today. The important part of the right to work law that you need to understand is the idea of exclusive monopoly representation. You've heard those words today, but let me tell you what that means. It's a very important construct in the arguments that others make against right to work. And it's the notion somehow that they are statutorily required to represent non-members in the workplace. They are not. Senator Patrick, I point you to an August 2007 brief filed by the Steel Workers Union with the National Labor Relations Board in a rulemaking procedure that said this very thing. They said, "We all recognize that labor law allows us to represent members only." And in fact, a change to Wincole, which is an offshoot of the AFL-CI, or a 6 million-member labor umbrella organization, filed a brief in November of 2008, on that same issue, saying, "Clearly, it's understood that union officials could bargain for only their members." In November of 2012, excuse me, November 2014, just five months ago, the Indiana Supreme Court was faced with a question of the constitutionality of Indiana's right to work law, and the Supreme Court of that state said, "We've looked, investigated into federal policy, and we see the union's exclusive bargaining privilege, membership representation, as completely voluntary." They choose to be an exclusive bargaining agent. But why would they do that? Well, there's arguments for that. They are stronger together, they are stronger together, there's no question about that. The workers that are here today representing their unions, this is what the union movement should be. These are voluntary members that are here because they believe in a cause, because they believe together, they are stronger than they could be individually. Unfortunately, there are other workers that may not believe that. And how we can use the power of government to force an individual into a collective which they did not vote for, did not ask for, and did not want, is something that the power of government, back in a case called Carter v. Carter Cole, I'd ask you to look this up, U.S. Supreme Court case from 1936, the government said this sovereign power granted to a private organization is obnoxious under the law. The idea that we can give a private organization the privilege to bind someone, to bind someone and represent them and speak for them without their consent is a true injustice. If union officials want to represent their members, which Representative Lockman indicated is happening right now at the Volkswagen facility in Chattanooga, Tennessee, they know this is completely possible. So why is it they want to protect this monopoly? They want to protect this monopoly, I will quote Robert Reich, who was the former Secretary of Labor for Bill Clinton, I think taught at Harvard University. He said, "In order to maintain their power, union officials must have a way to strap their members to the mast." Strap their members to the mast. And this is this exclusive bargaining power that they hold on to so jealously, and gives them the context of saying, "Well, we have to represent these workers, therefore, we should have them pay a fee to us." I would suggest the best thing for a union movement to do is to release those people, let them bargain on their own, and they will find very quickly that the men and women of the union movement can do a fantastic job representing them. And I would suggest to you that the accountability that this freedom brings to the monopoly bargaining unit or the bargaining on the floor requires that union officials be much more receptive to the voices of the workers they claim to represent. Right to work, we can talk about economics, we can talk about pay, we can talk about site selection, we can talk about all those things, but fundamentally, what you're doing here in Maine is you're considering a law that would ultimately protect a worker's right to join a union, to participate in joining a union, but also free those workers who chose not to do so. That is a fundamental individual freedom. We talk about the right to associate. The right to associate presupposes the right not to associate, and while Senator Patrick read Section 7 of the National Labor Relations Act, he didn't go far enough. He said, "Employees shall have the right to self-organization to form, join, or assist labor organizations, to bargain collectively through representatives of their own choosing, and to engage in other concerted activities for the purpose of bargaining and other mutual aid and protection, and shall also have the right to refrain from any or all such activity." Now, what could be fairer than that? But it wasn't a period they put after that, it was a comma. And it went on to say, "Employees shall have the right to refrain," quote, "except to the extent that such right may be affected by the agreement requiring union membership as a condition of employment." So under American law, we give them all these rights to do all these things, and we say it's really wonderful and really beautiful and really flowery, and then we come back and say, "No, we can determine your employment future based on your membership or non-membership in a labor organization." Obviously, the law has changed since then, you can't be forced to join a union, that is correct, but you can be forced to pay up to 100% in fees to keep your job. And the option choice that puts a worker in is really a difficult one, because on one hand, in order to maintain their ability to vote on their contract, to vote in union elections, to participate in any way of union activities, they must maintain their membership in the union. But in order to maintain their membership in the union, they must give up their political rights, their speech rights. Because if they do, like a couple of people in this room have done, they say, "I don't want to support that," they have to resign union membership. So on one hand, they defend their political rights by giving up their workplace rights. On the other hand, they maintain their workplace rights by giving up their political rights. That's a choice no worker should have to make. The fact is, the United States Supreme Court and states across the country are beginning to realize this individual freedom is not necessarily, is not as big of an issue if people want to make it. It is a big industry in the sense that unions collect over $20 billion a year. About $10 billion comes from dues or fees that are collected, not because workers wouldn't join or pay if they didn't, if they given the choice, but because the contract says they must. Representative Lockman read out a constitution, a union security clause in his contract. You look at most contracts, and they all have that union security clause in it. If right to work passes today, you consider it, and it passes in Maine, and you join the 25 other states, you can still have all those agreements, they just can't force anyone to pay fees. I would encourage you to look to what's happening across the country, both in the courts and in the states, for the individual freedom that right to work grants, but also for the protection it grants to union officials and to workers who want to join a union voluntarily, the right to do so. Any employer who violates that right, who fires a worker for trying to join a union, organize a union, there is redress. There's no question about that, it's undisputed in a right to work state. If you look at the right to work law in North Carolina, you can look it up, it talks about the right to join a union, that right's protected, it's hallowed, and it also says the right not to join a union. That's what we're debating here today, and I think the people of Maine deserve to hear this debate, it will grow, it continues to grow. I thank you for the opportunity to talk about it, and we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mixx. Any questions for Mr. Mixx? Senator Patrick?
Thank you. Mr. Mixx, you talked about $20 billion collected in union dues that goes in the year. Do you have any idea how much was collected from the dues that members have to pay with the Maine and the U.S. Chamber of Commerce?
I do not, sir. The facts that we use, it's called the LM2 form, the unions file with the Department of Labor. That revenue number that I suggest is, is private sector unions that represent, any union that would represent private sector employees, they're required to file that. And so we look at these LM2s, and their revenue stream, I said their revenue stream is about $20 billion, their dues stream is about $11 billion. But I don't know exactly what the Chamber would charge a member here, but it would be voluntary.
Any other questions for Mr. Mixx, Representative Stuckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, for taking the time and traveling to come share with us today. I'm wondering about other states throughout the country that have passed legislation like this. I've heard reports of union membership, union strength growing, as opposed to, you know, states that have not passed this type of legislation. Can you kind of give us an idea on what's going on around the country?
Sure. The Bureau of Labor Statistics puts out a study, and I think there's a unionstats.com website that does the same thing about union density, union membership, and then the number of workers covered by union agreements. And what they found in 2014 and 2013, and at least in 2012, and I can certainly provide the data, we have a table that can do this, that in 16 states in 2014 where union density and membership increased, eight of them were right to work states. Now, how could that happen? How could that happen? The reason why that happens is because union officials become much more accountable to rank and file workers, they're more interested in what's happening on the shop floor than they are in what's happening here in Augusta, no offense to our distinguished legislators here who are glad to have this participation, I'm sure, but it is important to understand that when they are accountable and held accountable by rank and file workers, they find that the, with union officials focused more on the shop floor than they do on, in the political marketplace. And so what we have found is that union density has actually increased, union membership has increased. I mean, it's, you can see the numbers yourself, they are what they are, the Bureau of Labor Statistics runs those numbers, and it's particularly interesting in Indiana, you heard the statistics already this afternoon, or, excuse me, this morning, about the increase in union membership in the state of Indiana. Further to say, in Michigan and Indiana, just in 2014, to kind of camp on that a little bit more, the two states that led the nation in new manufacturing job growth last year were Indiana and Michigan, and that's an exciting part of that, too. But in Indiana, union membership actually increased.
Follow up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what you're saying is, is even though in some of these particular states, they're not forced to join the union to work that particular job, whether it's an auto plan or whatever it happens to be, people are actually voluntarily joining. Is there any reason to believe that that sort of thing wouldn't happen here in Maine?
Well, I don't think so. And really, the question is, when you really boil this down and you get what's left in the bottom of the pan, is that, the question on the table for you to consider is, will you allow a worker to choose whether or not they want to join a union or pay dues to a union voluntarily? And the theory is, if you boil it down again, is that somehow, if given the choice, some workers would attract, would choose to leave. It's, it really is, in my mind, an argument against union officials and rank and file workers they claim to represent. Somehow, if they're given the choice, they would leave. And I would suggest that we ought to have more confidence in workers, they can choose what's right for them, they'll know if something benefits them, we ought to give them the what's right for them, they'll know if something benefits them, we ought to give them the benefit of the doubt as to how they associate.
Any other questions for Mr. Mixx, Representative Steckes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We heard testimony earlier that was presented to us, and it had a list of salaries that those who are in labor unions receive. I hope that you also believe that, do you believe that it's relevant, that information, just as your salary is relevant, due to public IRS records, you make over $100,000. The Vice President Legal Director makes nearly $180,000 at your organization, two staff attorneys make him up $150,000. Do you agree that that information, salary information, what you make to do what you do, is irrelevant?
It's absolutely relevant. In fact, we file publicly each year on our 994, my salary, I'm a, I'm a seventh highest paid, you check it again, seventh highest paid employee.
I would show four, but...
Of four? Who's that? No, those are the officers. Look at the attorneys.
Vice President Legal Director.
Yeah, you look it up, they're all listed there. Fine, I believe, well, I got a one person raise last week out in Omaha, Nebraska. Yeah, costly, $20. But no, absolutely, my salary is a matter of public information, and it's there for you to scan and look at, and yeah, that's the one I made. Started out in a union household, making minimum wage at a two-life grocery store, working midnight day with a ceramic plant loading 35 pounds of pellets into a kiln at around the 2,400 degrees.
I'm not sure if his pay is...
That's the point. Part of the labor presented, presented salary.
I'm not going to ask Mr. Schlobom, what he makes. I would never...
You're even welcome to.
Well, my salary's a matter of public issue. You can find it.
Any other questions, Jermaine, to what we're talking about?
Thank you for the opportunity. Do I need to sign this paper?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, so we're going to move to opponents, and we have designated opponents, CJ, Batit. I'm not sure whether you can have me. The French way, Batit. You are up first, followed by Mrs. Schlobom.
Senator Volk, Representative Hurbek, and members of the Joint Committee on Labor, Commerce, Research, and Economic Development. My name is CJ Batit, and I am the Director of Collective Bargaining and Research at the Maine Education Association. The MEA represents teachers and other public school employees in nearly every public school district in the state of Maine. I am here to testify in opposition to LD 1010, an act to afford public employers flexibility to achieve efficiency and quality in Minnachin. Spilled milk, that's what this bill is all about. One case wasn't decided in a manner deemed appropriate by a particular group, and a proposal is now before the Joint Committee to unseat what has been settled law and public policy for well over 30 years in this state. The bill is an unnecessary and unwarranted intrusion into the local bargaining relationship between the union and the employer. Subcontracting was first declared a mandatory subject of bargaining by the U.S. Supreme Court in 1964, the decision of Fiberboard Paper Product Court versus NLRB. The Maine Law Court reached the same conclusion in the public sector in 1981 in the case of superintending the school committee of the city of Bangor. And in 1986, the Maine Labor Relations Board in Teamsters versus Booth Bay Harbor Community School further expounded that both the decision to subcontract the unit, employees' work, and the impact that decision upon wages, hours, and working conditions of the affected employees are mandatory subjects of bargaining within the scope of 26 MRSA 965. Although this has been settled law for quite some time, there have been very few instances when disputes between parties on subcontracting have concluded at arbitration, as parties typically find agreement on the issue. In fact, there are only three such arbitration decisions the MEA has been able to locate. The first case is the Bangor case mentioned above, which was strictly a dispute over language, there wasn't a live proposal to subcontract that issue. In the second case, Assem Council 93 versus Pittsburgh School Committee in 1994, the arbitrators allowed the subcontracting of services while requiring severance pay for laid-off employees. And in the final case in 2014, Scarborough Education Association versus Scarborough Board of Education, in the majority decision, the arbitrators did not believe that the evidence, and that's where the evidence supports the conclusion that subcontracting will be beneficial. In short, the arbitrators found that with the evidence before the panel, it was hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison between subcontracting and the status quo to determine if there was even going to be savings, which didn't outweigh eliminating the job of every custodian in the bargaining unit. Historically, arbitrators have weighed the impacts of subcontracting on employees versus management's reasons to subcontract. In Teamsters Local 340 versus the University of Maine system, in a contract arbitration dispute over existing contract language and a bargaining agreement, the arbitrators framed the balancing test this way. The impact on employees in the unit must be weighed against management's reasons for subcontract. Subcontracts entered into for the primary purposes of avoiding the negotiated wage, benefit, and job protections present, present no such overriding reasons justifying unilateral action that strips employees of bargained wages and benefits and replaces them with non-employees. This check and balance is critical. Removing subcontracting as a subject of bargaining effectively removes the voice of the employee. While the arbitration cases are limited, the issue of subcontracting has popped up from time to time. And in some cases, the matter ends with subcontracting occurring, but in others, the work remains with district employees. This is often because the union gets involved, gets access to information as a bargaining agent, and finds solutions or problems of what...